All the regular meeting and Planktown Board Trustees to order, will everybody stand and join us and say in flag of allegiance?
To the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. First order of business is the agenda that is before us. Is there any addition or deletion by fellow board members or staff?
I wanted to add, under trustees, legislators, Capitol bill for 2014.
Legislators Capitol?
Yeah, Chamber slash Legislative Capitol Bill.
I would like, I don't know where you want to put, probably to brush more, just sure if you guys put it zoning, is that an issue that?
We could put that under, we could put that under zoning four, zoning five. Any other changes? Okay, the agenda will stand as presented. The only thing that I ask everybody then, any audience this evening if they're going to speak, to come forward to the podium, give your name and address for the fiscal officer. Once he gives you the nod, you can go ahead and address the board. Just to remind everybody, if you have a signed in and sign sheet in the back, please do so if you're going to speak. Also as a reminder, the meetings are not only audiotaped, they are videotaped also. That said, we will go to the first order of business, which is the sheriff's report. Do you have anything on the agenda? Sheriff Tim Swanson is in the audience as well as Lou Darrell and you guys.
Detective Connick.
Oh, Detective Connick, which is at all what it means, but I'm sorry though.
No, I've just come to, Bill Tony was coming up in the university, weren't here.
Perfect.
And we're just leaving the chair.
Does anybody in the audience have any questions or matters concerning the sheriff's department that we'd like to address?
Sheriff's office.
Sheriff's office. What did I say, Tom?
It's our.
Pardon, I'm sorry. Okay, then we'll close the sheriff's report. Then we will go to the detective's report. Detective Connick?
Good evening, everyone. The statistics for the month of October 2013, our office had 841 calls for service. Eighty-one total crashes, 11 of those were crashes worth injury. Looks like our crashes were down by two apiece in that aspect. We had 104 alarms, a little higher than September. Initiated 85 traffic stops with 77 citations and 26 total arrests, 13 apiece, 13 bookings and 13 summers for the month of October.
Does anybody in the audience have any questions for Detective? Okay, then we'll close the detective's report.
Thank you.
We'll go to unfinished business. Swimesh?
Yes, first unfinished business is the public service transformation update?
Yes.
I'll turn that over, I think, to trustee Haas.
Yeah, guys, I had spent a little time with the department heads, I think it was last, two Fridays ago, just touching base on, for us as a board, what else we can be focused on, essentially it was a brainstorming session because sometimes we've all got limited time now necessarily, have the time to get with all of us. And out of it came the need to discuss just the public service department. That's essentially where we adopted back after my May presentation of realignment of parks and the road department because of some of the attrition we had through retirement, but as well as looking for ways to deliver our services more effectively and efficiently. And we had pushed out originally the org chart and how certain things flowed and how things were being communicated. There was questions that come to, and I believe we're going to be able to address some of those here a little later on report, reporting structure and so forth. But aside from that, I wanted to bring it before our board, for the department heads to, you know, clarify any questions because it seems that how it was presented, maybe how it's been interpreted or lack of how it's been communicated, there may be some vagueness. So I thought it was appropriate that, you know, it was presented and adopted in public form, you know, we make sure we are clear with all the department heads who are responsible for executing this new transformation. So just.
Can I just start? I think the major thing that we have is communication with how we want to communicate. Whatever way the board sees fit, that's what we want, but we need to know who we're communicating with, how, and who's communicating what messages for what departments. I guess it's kind of where we're a little in a gray area about, as Lisa says, Rob is a myself, is Eric, is, you know what I mean? We need to know where we're going, you know, with this. So we're all on the same page. That's all we want to be. We all want to be on the same page.
And the guidance that I, I mean, the comments I'm going to say, I provided, but bearing that, you guys still had yours to say was, you know, when this was drafted, you know, the new parks development outreach would be the one that's leading the communications and so forth, but anything that's related to the program or the facilities over there. So whether it's the Dull Park, whether it's the soccer and lacrosse fields to what could be something else.
Like the Bollandor programming.
Yeah, anything that's regard.
Facilities on site.
Facilities and the programming, that messaging would come through Rob's role, obviously, you know, that's going to be based upon fact that he's going to have dialogue with Joe and Derek, who should report nothing through Joe. But I know there was some communications that come out that, well, why is Rob sending this, when in his job description, what, it's there, it's there for sending that stuff out.
I mean, as far as communications regards to programming and use of the facility, yes, that should come from Rob, but as far as field maintenance, upkeep, changes being made to the facilities and stuff, those communications should be given through Derek, but I think both, and Joe, but I think collectively, I think all three of you should be in communication together. So depending on which department, whether it's Derek's area or if it's Rob's area, you know, Joe's been made aware of it and then that communication after he reviews it, you know, comes to us. So that way, all three of you are on the same page, I think, is the one thing that we, at least I want to make sure of. As long as the message gets to me, I can regard, it doesn't matter which one is relaying that message to me, as long as all three of you know about it collectively are on the same page when it's given. I noticed a little bit of, you know, the communication issue, you know, when in regards at the beginning, when Derek first came on and took over the duties that he had, not coming forward, and I think we have addressed those, you know, but I think now that Rob's on board, you two should be working together in conjunction with each other to make sure that message comes back to us unified. Like, I think, what you?
Yeah, I mean, Rob is doing a great job in our programming. We're getting a lot of things happening. He has an expectation of what he wants to take place on those fields. Now we go to our expert who does the fields and has been keeping care of those fields. So those two would need to communicate and Joe would, I'm not sure where Joe on that would come in with as far as the fields, your communication comes in a different manner, but you know, when you're setting up a program, what you want and what you guys need in those fields. You've done so much, and he's done, for him now, it's almost repetitious. And I lose this, I think, and somehow.
I think the point, the point is for Joe, where the ambiguity, correct me if I'm wrong there, is, I mean, with that org chart, Derek and the staff rolling up through Joe, I would almost see it from the origin, yeah, you know, Rob and Derek, they consult, but ultimate, you know, final.
It's probably going to be Rob and I consulting, and then I will.
Joe should be engaged with Derek.
Okay, I like that, I like that. And I think that's.
It's simplifying things is what it's basically doing.
I think Rob's.
I mean, so for the sake of you guys, I mean, from what I took away two weeks ago, are there any other points that we need to address to relieve the ambiguity?
Are emails the way we're going?
For me, that's the.
You guys all have jobs and do different things and can't answer phones and stuff.
Email's all I need. If it's urgent, I just say, email's fine with me.
I know sometimes you don't like emails.
They have a road, a lot of times, most of the time during the day, I'd rather have a phone call or communication immediately instead of, Mr. Myself driving and looking at emails.
Okay, so for my own clarification.
We want to know, will we copy your email?
My clarification, you're saying it doesn't matter which one of us talks to you as long as we talked prior to that communication being had, making sure Joe and I are on the same page.
We're all on the same page before we go to that. Basically what those guys are saying, right?
And emails is one to include all three of you, so that way everybody knows what's being.
I think we have other things to talk about later, so.
I mean, I apologize for being so stick and old fashioned. I like emails, I sure like to talk to a voice, I just like to talk to somebody. I can read those things and I can communicate with something about hearing that person, getting a laugh out of them, telling a little joke, there's more of a bonding for me with the voice than there's that, this little email. I'm sorry, I'm old fashioned, getting older and older, probably getting more old fashioned, but something about the voice and direct contact to me is so much more important.
And, I mean, outside the communications piece, from a cross-training aspect, because that was one of the functions, how are we with? Derek, you've got your CDL now, is there anybody else that we had that should be?
I think there's some stuff we need to talk about just later before we go into that part of that yet. We don't know where that's going yet, so.
Okay.
I have an idea.
And then just with respect to contract, contracts, service contracts for performing.
For.
What's the AC?
Eric is working on that, yeah.
We can do one of a couple things. I thought what would probably work the best, have you guys been through the different vendors and the price sheets to this point?
Just provide.
Everybody seen that? What I'll do then, and Joe and I talked about it today, is put together resolutions for the three categories, it would be four categories. A resolution for each category that's blank as to the provider, attach the contract and say, okay, for this particular category, we'll use this person, this is their price rate pursuant to the attached agreement. And then you can pick in each category who we're going to use after you go through the process.
And I think as part of that resolution, you have a primary and then you have a.
You want to have a primary and secondary?
Secondary, because someone says, hey, I'm too small, we want to make sure we're keeping up time on any of our services.
Yeah, I would like to get this, you know, balled up before we lose those pricing, but you can get some good pricing on some of those trades.
All right, we'll have it for you.
All right, thank you.
All right, number two, I'm sorry, are we moving on? Working plan development station number four.
Again, this was not, this was not what come of that, for a session I had with the guys, you know, we've taken a look initially at the board's, some of their numbers, what's that property worth, and we've said, okay, we know parks needs this, or roads needs this, or we could potentially use that. I think formally what we need to do is be able to provide guidance to the department heads to say, hey, come back to us with, you know, whether it's one, three, however many viable working plans by X date. The feedback I got from these guys, you know, it could be turned around within two weeks.
Probably within two weeks, but our plan, we would like, you know, that's a force decision.
So I'm looking at it from the aspect, so, okay, instead of, we hear a little bit of talk from parks, we hear a little bit from road, they're all sitting down together to take a look and say, hey, here's what we can do. We potentially see our, then us as a board, obviously, we brought even to make a determination because reality is, is that station's not too far off from, going to be empty when the new central station opens. So, I mean, they had said, hey, I think you guys have talked about this, but we don't have any formal guidance on what to be doing about it.
Well, I've had my verbal with both of you.
Yeah.
I got a pretty good grip on what you both need there. Something on paper again, and then discussions, and then us making a final call, because I maybe might see something a little different than those two see over there, so I hope we have a happy meeting. I know your need.
Given the need for the barracks, you know, quarters, or maybe offices or something.
If that's the case, do we, do we have a representative from the sheriff's office? Talk to the substation?
We talked, we have been, we brought it up, so probably should be in there too.
Sheriff Swanson, with respect to the fact that we've got the six one substation over there, Station Three, I mean, I know our boards collectively talked, it'd be nice to potentially do something on this side of township. Would you guys be amenable to having somebody come over here, whether it's Mr. Darrell or yourself or whoever you would appoint, just to talk about, hey, if the sheriff's office was to do a substation over here on this side of township, this is what we would require as far as space and facilities, or actually we'd shy away from this for whatever the reasons are? I'm just asking on behalf of our board whether or not.
Yeah, we, you know, we've taken on a long time ago, if you remember back, was, we told the township deputies to build at every fire station and utilize every single fire station for whatever they needed. That was, and if they need to bring people there, and that's always worked out when Sebo was chief, and then when Donnie Miller took over, it's always been a running thing. Now I understand there's been a substation per se open, and we have not any objections to that. I just don't want cars or deputies hanging out at these places. I want them used for the proper reasons, but we have no objections to that. I don't think Lieutenant has.
So would it be Lieutenant Darrell that was?
Lieutenant Darrell would be the contact.
So I don't know, let's run you guys whenever you see what his schedule is and you guys.
If I may, trustee Haas, Joe and I, we've talked to the county also about one of their trucks in the winter time, aren't there? What, Joe and you and I have.
Do you want to put the county truck there?
They don't want, they don't want to be in our garage because they feel the.
Liability issues.
Liability on their end, they will trust their drivers backing in.
It's tight, it's, they're having, they're.
I've been in contact.
So they'd rather score it outdoors over at the fire station?
No, possible indoors.
Maybe one truck indoor. It's just room for talk right now, Joe and I.
And I have a meeting next week with Dave Thorns and Keith Bennett on this matter to see if they're even going to do it again this year.
They're not comfortable pulling in and out of the road garage, but they're comfortable backing in and out of the go over head door.
They go in and out. It's because all our other trucks are around them, they have parking space just like our drivers do, you know what I mean?
What's that going to take away from our sports capability to getting our?
Well, that's why we're.
That's why these guys sit down, robbing potential options, kind of, and say, hey, option one's this, option two.
They get three planes, you know, whatever we come up with.
It's something that we, I guess, that we need to discuss.
It just helps move this forward, instead of having something sit empty down there. We can get it repurposed quicker and then not end up piecemealing something together like later.
Okay, real quick, I'm sorry, would we be affected too, if the three of us, if we'd have a work session, we would actually walk there, after we came up with some type of conclusion?
Oh, yeah, I think after they bring that to.
Say a visual look and say, this is what it's going to look like.
Yeah, I think, let them bring that and then, that'll help us envision what more to talk about.
Mr. Hagee has something?
Actually, just as a point of order, under concerns of trustees, joint school board, township board of trustees, meeting December 10th.
And location?
It'll be Clint Township Hall.
What time, Scott?
Five twenty.
All right, let's go to new business, Mr. Williams.
Thank you. New business number one is the false alarms.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
And Mr. G. Vases?
Yes.
Thank you. New business number two is the township auction, and I think, Scott, you would put that one on? You're busy tonight.
Well, we had, we had some key takeaways, so I can't walk out of these meetings and then do nothing or else I'll be lynched by the department heads. One of the things that come out, I mean, just do the, obviously, we know some of the used IT inventory, Rob's got to stuff within the parks and the roads, department heads felt it would be worth us looking at warmer weather, having another township auction of old used assets and so forth. Lisa had noted she would go out and get three different bids on the auction services. I think Dutton was who she noted did it before, but essentially between now and the spring, would look to have the departments identify to us what they've, what they've got to help start moving this forward, so, you know, stuff that we just have sitting around that's no longer being used or it's not of value. No different than help Joe, whatever, six months or once a year, guess where to scrap? Scrap, well, now we're going to do something.
It's been successful in the past with the auction. With that two of them, I could wait.
And that's potentially something, I don't want to.
You had two of them in the past?
We don't put the card before it pours, but, you know, it's probably going to be more effective than, I think I heard, just necessarily throwing stuff out of the gov deals, sometimes based upon the fees, but then as well, maybe I'll get some of the other joint townships that may say, hey, can we throw our factor or whatever, and so.
Kind of part of some stuff, like, oh, Ross buried and stuff.
Poor guy, he's in his office and, oh, so, as far as, you know, provide the guidance back to Lisa that by, you know, explore dates for early spring.
Yeah, I hope she's back by then.
It's over. Okay, let's go to three.
Number three is the annual CLOUT membership in the Coalition of Large Ohio Urban Townships.
Has this come at a different time? Yeah, I want to, I'm going to make a motion to bring this to the table.
Second.
Discussion. I was, Scott, basically, we said, this is coming up at a different time, you know, we normally handle this at the beginning of the first meeting of the year, each year. And I would like to get together and talk to, whether it's Lisa or one of us to call the other townships that are members of this, because I know there was some discussions in the past about what the actual representation for CLOUT has been in relationship to the dues that we're paying to be a member of that organization. Because I think overwhelming, I think at the joint meeting, I think we had, I think Jackson Perry ourselves and I'm, the link was there, that we truly felt that CLOUT was actually representing the needs of the larger townships as far as their, as their goal and something, instead of some of the smaller townships in the state of Ohio. I would like to find out what their intentions are before we would move, so I would like to take this motion up the table.
Table motion?
Yeah, table motion. Okay, number four.
Number four is the amendment with regard to the meetings as far as times and dates in December. You can see the resolution there, changes the second meeting being particular to the 17th, so it's the week before, because it's not the week of.
I'll send over new business number four.
I'll second it. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. G. Vases?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Come to the fiscal office for your report, Mr. Flex.
Thank you, Mr. President. Fiscal officer number one is a request for a resolution by the Planktown Board of Trustees Stark County Ohio to pay into the pending warrants in the amount of $510,134.77. Is attached here too?
I'll send over.
Seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. G. Vases?
Yes.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Fiscal officer number two is a request for a resolution by the Planktown Board of Trustees Stark County Ohio to offer as payment of a regular payroll in the amount not to exceed $220,000.
So move for a pay.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. G. Vases?
Yes.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Fiscal officer number three is a request for a resolution by the Planktown Board of Trustees Stark County Ohio to offer as the payment for the following medical claims as provided by health care.
I'll send over.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. G. Vases?
Yes.
And Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Fiscal officer number four is just the financial report.
Thank you. If anybody has any questions, they can give up, Mr. Flex.
Fiscal officer number five is a request for a resolution by the Planktown Board of Trustees Stark County Ohio to follow transfers.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. G. Vases?
Yes.
Fiscal officer number six is a request for a resolution by the Planktown Board of Trustees to appropriate the amended resources that were certified from the last meeting.
So moved. Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. G. Vases?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Fiscal officer number seven is a request for a resolution to amend Resolution 13-678, which was for the firefighter longevity. Richard Morfito was accidentally excluded on that list and he was not employed with the township at the time, so he should be removed, and that's what this resolution does.
So moved. Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Is that Mr. Leno on the second?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. G. Vases?
Yes.
Fiscal officer number eight is a request for a resolution of the Planktown Board of Trustees Stark County Ohio to offer as the fiscal officer to request an additional amended certificate for estimated resources from the Stark County Otter.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. G. Vases?
Yes.
And Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Fiscal officer number nine, we received, just bringing to the board's attention, we received a request for the change of ownership for the liquor license from Ledges to R&amp;R Housing Group LLC, DBA, the Bistro from Oakwood and Patio.
I think those are, it's been customary, we hold these orders. We are, we already exist. Do you think this is already existing?
Yeah, they're, they're existing restaurants based on, based up in green, and they're, they're gonna add the location down here.
I don't have, personally, have a problem with it.
Do I?
I think they'd fall without objection. Ten.
Fiscal officer number ten is, uh, is a request for a resolution, uh, by the Plank Township Board of Trustees, Star County Ohio, to, to essentially, uh, change the amount that's held in retainage. When Bodner had originally submitted a retainage account amount, number, that exceeded the, the retainage amount, that we could actually hold over, they since went back and recalculated it, um, the total. There was another error on the, on the fireside for submittal of it, therefore we held over forty thousand, too much of retainage, so we could release that back into the capital account on there, and that's what this resolution's for.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. G. Vases?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Finally concludes the fiscal officer number four.
Thank you, Mr. Flex. Let's go to the administrative board, Mr. Williams will be handling that.
Item number one is authorized payment to Worsor Brothers for composting and recycling.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
And Mr. G. Vases?
Yes.
Item number two is to amend a resolution to, uh, I'll tell you, I don't know how you say that, out of your corp of Wilson Hawk, DBA The Wilson Architectural.
So moved.
I'll second it. Discussion?
Who is this? This one has to do with the, uh, I believe this is the rest, the restroom project, because we had, uh, opted to use them in the, uh, Soul, Soul Harris.
Yeah.
Day, because their bid was approximately one-third of that, half of the next closest bids.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
And Mr. G. Vases?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Let's go to the fire department report, Chief Schaller.
Yes, trustee, the TV says, uh, first item is our monthly report for your review.
All right, thank you, chief. Item number ten.
Uh, number two is a, uh, change order, uh, for the fire station, uh, to BCMC Construction, uh, for substantial completion date, for all contractors to be November first. Uh, this was per meeting of the general contractor and owner, uh, with the trustee.
So moved.
Just a discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. G. Vases?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
And Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Uh, number three is, uh, resolution to authorize purchase of payment for gasoline, oil, diesel fuel, at a cost not to exceed twenty thousand dollars, taken from account number ten A O nine.
So moved. Or second.
Motion by Mr. Lino, second by Mr. Haas, roll call.
Mr. G. Vases?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
And Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Uh, item number four is, uh, resolution for, uh, change order, uh, number fifteen to BCMC Incorporated to install Worcester Barrier and Rooms, um, as listed one oh four through one oh seven, one seventeen, to allow installation of floor coverings for the new fire station, not exceed five thousand one hundred thirty-two dollars and forty-one cents.
So moved.
Second. None, roll call, please.
Mr. G. Vases?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
That completes the fire department business.
Thank you, chief. Will we go to the zoning department?
Hey, hey, hey.
Hope I pass you up, too. Apologize. It's what they get for pointing down on a lot. So go to the zoning.
Item number one is the monthly report for October. Any questions? Get our first new day today.
I was hoping you always said anything, because it doesn't matter. They already have it.
A little bit. We can solve it a little bit. Just some intersections.
Can't.
Item number two is a seasonal weight restrictions to the Star County in the years. We have posted these roads last year, if you remember correctly, but every year, we have to have a new resolution done by the commissioners, so we have to submit our list again for this year, um, and the list of roads are there. So our signs will become effective again. Information.
Hey, Joe, apologies. Let's go to the zoning office.
Thanks, gentlemen. Okay, thank you. Uh, item number one is our monthly reports for October. Item number two, we have two nuisance abatements before you this evening. One is at thirteen twenty-one thirtieth Street Northeast, and the other is at fifteen nineteen thirty-first Street Northeast.
I'm with adoption of nuisance abatement two A and two B.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. G. Vases?
Yes.
Okay, item number three, we have four payments before you. One is at four thousand and one Martindale, one is at thirty-eight fourteen Royal Avenue Northeast, we have one at three thousand and six twenty-sixth Street Northeast, and another at thirty forty twenty-sixth Street Northeast.
Also move on zoning three A through D.
I'll second it. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. G. Vases?
Yes.
Thank you. Zoning number four, um, and you may recall, the Star County Land Reutilization Corporation has a program that is set aside for the disposition of vacant lots, and we have had two applications through the, uh, Land Reutilization Corporation, and they are asking for approval on the disposition of these two lots. One is a vacant lot on Dorothy Avenue Northeast, the other is a vacant lot on thirty-seventh Street Northwest. These are, the side lot go to adjacent neighbors, contiguous neighbors. The property on Dorothy in years past has been a nuisance property for us. The current applicant has been knowing and maintaining the property this year, and actually, we would be able to take this property off of our moving Ohio Forward Demolition List, as it does have a garage on it that this individual has started to clean up and rehabilitate. Uh, so my recommendation that we approve the transfer of ownership of the vacant lot on Dorothy Avenue to Mr. Telleroli, and the other one is a vacant lot on the corner of thirty-seventh Street in Whipple. And once again, the current, if you drive by, it looks like it's the neighbor's property. And basically what happened, Whipple Avenue was widened to four lanes. It took the property on the corner out of being, uh, a standard lot as far as zoning. Now it was substandard lot as far as width, area, everything else. The current owner has maintained it. It looks just like his lot. Uh, I would recommend that we grant approval for transfer of the ownerships through the Star County Land Reutilization Corporation Side Lot Program for both of these parcels to the adjacent neighbors. They've done a good job of maintaining them.
So we, again, no, there's been no, we haven't incurred any cost on the type, title work or business out for...
No, we do not incur any, any cost. What, the cost that occurs to us is the taxes are on the never never.
Essentially what we have, essentially what we have been able to collect, the new, the agreement with the land bank orders, whoever gets transferred a piece of property through the side lot, they have requirements, that they have to keep the current taxes as well as it has to be ma- maintained, because it falls back into nuisance.
Right, all that kind of nuisance, and they can lose it earlier.
Now, these will remain a separate lot from the main parcel that's being given to them, correct?
Uh, yes, that's a little reminder. They, they can combine, or they can maintain a separate. Uh, it's kind of a up to the owner, but once again, for example, a, a property on thirty-seventh, can't do anything with it anyway, other than use it for yard. The property on Dorothy does have enough size where if the current owner would decide to construct a new home or donate it to Habitat, that, that is a large enough parcel that could happen. Uh, but I think the issue is the, the thing that is why I see it, one is taking a nuisance property away. Uh, we have not been collecting past real estate taxes on it, so it's starting fresh, just like it's a new lot. So it's a new program.
It's a bottom line, you're right.
Bottom line, I would recommend both go through, they're both, I checked both owners out. There are no problems.
I'll make a motion to move on, uh, four A and B.
Second. Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. G. Vases?
Yes.
Thank you. And, and Mr. Lino has requested, uh, an update on the property at twelve eighteen Rushmore Avenue Northwest. You'll recall, this was a property that had some...
Can I, I'm the one that brought this up.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
May I please start it?
Yep.
Thank you.
Pass this down to Mr. Williams, if you could, please.
I, I just want some closures on this, gentlemen. I, I have responsibility to residents who are concerned about this. As you all know, and I know you two are the same way, when you get a call from a resident, we do try to give them a hundred percent. That's been always my, that's been how I've always tried to offer it. To me, this still is unacceptable, but for some reason, Danny claims to think that she's in compliance. She takes a pile, a skid of, of rocks, bricks and stones, and builds a fence around it, doesn't move any of the contents, and all of a sudden it becomes compliant. If you notice the corner of that picture, you can still see that pile of debris that she was supposed to move, that's still there, but she tried to build a fence around it, but you can still see a corner picture of it. And I, I was not mistaken, I thought that we were gonna try to have this resident, that now that they built this fence, at least stick this pile like someone would stick their wood pile in the back of their home, along the back of the fence, in a nice uniform fashion to make it look a lot neater. This pile hasn't been moved, the fence is still around, it's around it, but still sticks out. I thought that this pile would be in the back of the house, now up against that back fence. And let me, it's some type of, of an order, because to me, the residents can still see this debris that was supposed to be moved, but now it's just been a fence that's been built around it. Me personally, maybe I'm too picky. This, to me, is unacceptable. I still declare this and think that this is still a nuisance. And if you look up front where this tree is, that's pea gravel that was supposed to be moved. That is the stuff that she used when she put her, her block and papers in her driveway. That's never been moved yet. That pile's still there. So I need you guys, if you, if you look at it and say, oh, you're too picky, then that's fine. I'll call the residents up and say, my other two board members think I'm too picky, they're in compliance, and I want co- uh, I want closure on this, because I owe it to these residents. Maybe it's just me, maybe I am being too picky, but to me, this is not in compliance. Dan, how tall is this fence?
Uh, I think it's gonna be probably about six feet.
Those posts look like they're closer to...
Sixteen, no.
It's high as a roof. There's probably, it'll max out six to eight feet.
The post maybe, she's stated that she's gonna cut it later. Regulations require no more, just remember we're eighteen.
Yeah, but these posts are going up as high as people in the garage.
Also got some elevation, a slight elevation, need to take into account. I mean, I do recall, I, my, my, what I recall, what I recall of this is, I thought we had specified that it wants to go in that back, in that back corner, then that's what, that's what, what I recall. Because we set, we gave a two-week timetable for material, then four weeks for fence.
That's correct.
I do recall, because I thought we ultimately said how this, how this property lines up, and there's two other...
It's on the corner.
Yeah, it's on, it's on the corner, so we'd asked, I think we even used the, the, uh, storage barn as a point, as a point of reference from prior comments, given that's the back, back corner of the property. I just think it should be moved. I personally think it should be moved. What's, what's the, I mean, is that an ultimate, I mean, I can't tell by looking at that. Is that, is that...
It's, it's maybe, it's...
There, that's what, it would be considered part of the height of the fence, right? Yeah, the post's for it.
I mean, she's got four weeks till the fence, fence construction is completed, so if it's, if the finished product, product doesn't have it, have the post down to where they need to be for that.
Right, right.
I mean, it's a, it's construction phase right now, so I'm not gonna speak about the height of the post. I do think the missing, I'm gonna agree with Mr. Lino, I do think that material still needs to be moved. Just the fact that, you know, we talked about that back area being completely fenced in, which if they had one more panel there, the gate or whatever, that, that would hide, that would hide it, but...
Does this person live in there, Danny?
I don't know. I've, I've seen her in the house, I've seen her pet in the house, there's furniture there. I was, I will, I don't know if she is actually living there or not. She lives, I knocked on the door, she didn't answer. The door opened, it's quiet, sorry.
Well, I agree with Mr. Lino also, I don't think this isn't compliant. I think these things need to be moved. I guess we gotta address the other issues in the next meeting.
If they're not, yeah.
Is that agreed by them? How's it looking here to the fit town group? If this comes along, that's tricky. Probably would have to give, um, notice of hearing. This probably should have been on the agenda tonight, but since it's not, we have to give notice of the hearing and have a hearing, give her notice that they inhabit it, and give her notice that there'll be a hearing, hell, let the next board be, send her a letter. If I'm not mistaken, didn't you, didn't we try to correct that, where you were very upset about we can go ahead and still send a letter, and if it's not done, then we're ahead of ourselves, but once again, now we, uh...
Did we declare it sometime?
No, we gave her an extension.
We'll adopt a...
Because she asked, she requested an extension, it was not, she didn't want to send out those.
Well, let's just deal with what we've got.
Well, we sent her a letter, give her a...
Right, no, I understand that. Now we need to...
Sent a seventeen letter, and then updated it the next meeting.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, okay.
Okay. Thank you, Ben. Let's go to Parks and Facilities. Yes, Mr. Chairman. Parks and Facilities, uh, number one is the monthly report.
Those drawings look impeccable. Those were the best I've ever, I've ever seen in the four years I've ever with the strength between the striking and some of the customization that was done. Thank you. Good job, kind of, the crew. So it's gonna allow us to continue to track, track other events.
And the awnings that are pictured, they are complete, but the photos got lost somewhere in the, in between from the cameras and the computer, and I couldn't take pictures today because they're covered in stuff.
That's what happened.
They are complete.
Okay, we'll go to Parks and Program. Thank you.
Gentlemen, item number one is the monthly report for Parks Program.
Just with respect to the execution of it, again, good job. Spec, special thanks to the sheriff's office, because you guys were at top of it. Anybody who was parking in the no parking areas like that... Anybody who was parking in the no parking areas like that, I mean, I pulled up just to shout something to our staff, and your guy was down there like that, and like, just checking on the guys, I promised to move, so, I mean, everybody's taken notice to that. You know, I know it's rough looks and feathers were folks in the beginning, but it's been the right thing to do, and it's really helped us with the execution of our regular program, let alone the larger events that spread the traffic, so for the staff that's going out performing that job, we appreciate them for speaking there, performing that work.
I'd like to point out in the middle of the monthly report that we got to actually see them putting the stencils on the fields for the particular tournaments we do, we do have lacrosse days and soccer balls. Derek's guys are so talented at what they do, they laid a stencil out, and by the third stencil, I think Trustee Haas, when I actually sit back and watched him freehand the rest of the stencils, so it just speaks to the talent and professionalism of the staff we have to work with each and every day. So I want to thank them, I want to thank the road guys again for their impeccable job with the parking situation, and, um, fire and safety for, for being on alert if we needed them, and helping us work through an emergency action plan for the facilities. It's been great, and Joyce's folks at Concessions have always been a high level of execution.
Okay, anybody have anything else? I have two more. I'm sorry about that, Rob. Kids go number two.
Number two is the Winter Fest Program, we're set for Saturday, December seventh. We're going to have, uh, five bonfires, as cleared by our fire department. We're going to have a visit from a man in a red suit, probably brought in by the fire department. The Oakwood Middle School Select Choir will be performing that night. Arts and crafts will be, excuse me, that was my voice already. Arts and crafts will be in the community room, hosted by the Plain Branch of the Stark County Library, the Historical Society of the Onsite, both helping man the fires and with their table inside. And we have three middle branch stores, Lush, Glory Jeans, Heartfelt Treasures, and Home Sweet Home will be vending in the tent during it, along with our ice carver, our wood carver, and obviously kids and Santa and the concession, so we're excited to add to the programming and celebrate the fifth anniversary of the event.
Okay, and number three?
Number three, I was asked a month ago to look at the feasibility and concerns to Edgewood Golf Course, and in doing so, I came to find it was under contract and not for sale. Outside of that, through my research, I concluded it wouldn't be feasible financially for the township to do so.
Okay, is anybody having questions for Rob?
That'll include Parks Program.
Thank you. Let's go to law director. He doesn't have some, he has a big one tonight.
Big one. I've got the resolution to agree to enter into the mutual economic development agreement. This is the four-way agreement between North Canton, Canton-Jackson, and Plain Township regarding specified areas in both Jackson and Plain Township where we're talking about bringing in new businesses, sharing the infrastructure, sharing the tax revenue, something that all three of you worked very hard on, but we had the, oh, what was it about?
The public hearing.
Was it a week ago? Two weeks ago, something?
Two parties.
Yeah, we, we went and had the public hearing at Jackson Township Hall, heard public input and whatnot, she were all there, and this is the resolution to enter into that agreement. In, um, hopes that it would be the exact agreement we looked at, I actually included it and left in the Jackson Township agenda, so anything, if you wouldn't mind taking out page two, which is their agenda from our public meeting, I appreciate it. But other than that, it's the one we all talked about in the public meeting, verbatim.
To move on, law director number one.
Second, that discussion. First of all, I want to thank you, Eric, for the time and hours that you put in, working with the law directors and all the other three communities, and working with all three of us because of our differences sometimes in opinions, but I think this agreement worked out pretty good for everybody involved. I commend Scott again for the effort he put forth, working with the city council, North Canton Council, members of North Canton Administration for bringing them back to the table and getting them included in this discussion with Jackson and Canton, and, um, as I said, I think this is a big step forward for Stark County.
I think likewise, I mean, your efforts with the city, city of Canton, making sure everybody was informed, I mean, for this, quite frankly, to be the first in the state four-way agreement amongst the two largest, the two largest townships in Stark County, the largest city, and I'm not sure where North Canton falls in it, but, you know, given the turf battles in the past, the past is the past, we're paving a new roadway here for moving forward because it's the only option we have in order to maintain our viability long-term as communities without asking our taxpayers for additional resources.
I think that says it all right there. The only way that we're going to survive as individual communities and maintain our individual identities are going to be agreements like these, allow us to work together, not only for economic development, but it's also going to allow us to share, uh, other areas and other services and equipment, you know, consolidate and merge things together to save costs, to bring costs down, so we aren't taxing our residents out of their homes. So I think you're right on the spot there. I mean, I think this is the first step in a lot of agreements they can come from going forward. I just commend you two, our law director, there's been a lot of hard work involved in this, a lot of time. It's great to see that we can work together as one. I know Scott said like bygone be bygones, and I'm willing to accept that, but honestly, if we could have done this twelve, fifteen years ago and lost some key places in our townships, we could have been working with them then, sure would have been a lot different as far as money, revenue in our township, but I still have to fill that out there, I'm sorry. We've had our battles, the battles are over, but it's just too bad we couldn't have done this fifteen years ago.
Exactly right, three annexation attempts on walkers, mom, and go, that would have been nice. And I think, Eric, it was, um, no jab at you as an attorney the other evening, but I fully agree with, the only ones that ever made out of those agreements were you, the lawyers.
But it's one of those things, you fought for it.
You fought for us, we won those, but, uh, but there are no winners in those situations.
Yeah, especially when they go on for two and three years. We were in court for two or three years, great for me, not so great for everybody else.
I know, you were pretty... But you work hard. The reason why the mom's still in the township is because of you.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasus?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go to communications. Can you angle that, Eric? Do you want me to do it?
Uh, it's just a, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Gevasus, if you'd like.
We have a communication for Friends of Parks, um, it's addressed to Chief Snyder and Chief Schallenberger. They want to thank you very much for supporting the Friends of Parks, second annual Parks for Soldiers event held, which was this past Saturday, Sunday. And it said, "We appreciate the cattle collaboration among the township services, and we're proud to support the betterment of our community. We look forward to working with you in the future, and we'll continue to make Plain Township a great place for families." And that's from Danette Lund, who is the board president of Friends of Parks.
No other communications. We will go to the portion of our agenda now for public speaks, if anybody wants to speak to the board, they may do so at this time. We only ask that you come, like I said at the beginning of the meeting, is come to the podium, give your name and address clearly through the fiscal officer, and before you leave, please sign the sign and sheet in the rear of the building or the room, so Anthony can make sure he has your name spelled correctly for the record. Does anybody wish to address the board at this time? And, uh, I'm sure you're aware of the three-minute work.
My name is Gary Mall, I live at seventy-one sixty Gary, G-A-R-Y, Mall, M-U-L-L. I live at seventy-one sixty Gary Trail Avenue Northeast.
Thank you.
Uh, I'd like to talk about the golf course a little bit, just the property in particular, not the, not the results of the study of the golf course, the feasibility. Just like to say that the residents are still very much concerned about that and very adamant that we not see any zoning change. We're a little confused as to the process that's involved there, and talking to attorneys, one who has already served on the zoning commission, it's our understanding that the, the property, if it has or has not changed hands yet, I'm not sure. Perhaps you know and better than I or anybody else, but we don't think it has as of yet, but if it has, um, and they do request a zoning change, it's our understanding through the attorneys that they will have to go back through the process and only, the request for zoning change can only be handled by the zoning commission, not the zoning board of appeals, I just want to make sure that we understand that properly.
Yes.
Okay, because that's what the attorneys are telling us. And I'd just like to state, just as a matter of public record, that the residents are still very concerned about that, we are absolutely against any zoning change, we understand that people have a contract on the property, and they're entirely within their rights to develop the property as the zoning laws change, as stand now, we, we, we would have liked to have seen the township take advantage of the property, we would like to see it remain involved first, there's a lot of things we would have liked to have seen, and those things still could happen, they're still on, on the table. It's hard to say because there are moves that have to be made, but we want the trustees to know that we are adamantly, we are, we will, we have drawn a line in the sand about the zoning, and I'm talking not just about the little group that, that meets regularly, I'm talking about the two hundred people that showed up at the zoning commission meeting, and I'm sure if there's another opportunity, there'll be more than two hundred people there, because there are six basic neighborhoods around there that are single-family, and they do not want multiple family units in. So I just thought I would, I wanted to clarify that I was right about the zoning commission and the appeals and how that would work. Our understanding is that the zone, the appeals would only have to do with any kind of a variation, so...
It will go to RPC if they do...
So it'll start right over from the top.
Yeah, it'll go to RPC first.
How, because I've met, I've met with some of the residents last, last Thursday, because they was asking questions, and that's what triggered my email to you, Danny, on the zoning commission, zoning appeals boards, and how, how that flows, because I told them I wasn't going to walk out giving answers to some, certain things, I wasn't a hundred percent certain about. My understanding, and I was trying to draw parallels here, and I know there's a couple sitting in the back, you could hold me to this, like McDonald's, when McDonald's submitted their, their plan, the zoning commission turned it down, turn, let me, let me talk to this, and then zoning commission turned, turned it, turned it down, voted no. Ultimately, McDonald's said, we're going to pull, we're going to pull that plan, we're going to come back with a revised plan to address their, their concerns. That then ended up going before the zoning appeals board, which had the three to, the three to two votes, so you took original plan, and then they modified it based upon feedback from the re, from the re, residents.
The, the McDonald's issue never went to the zoning commission because they never requested the zone change. It was, it was to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
How was, how's a conditional, so...
What?
Conditional use.
The conditional use is through the Board of Zoning Appeals. As, as an example, one of...
The zoning commission only...
The zoning commission handles text changes to the zoning resolution or map changes to zoning districts. The zoning commission makes recommendations on, based upon an application to the Board of Trustees. The Board of Trustees has the final vote for things that come through the zoning commission because it affects the zoning resolution, which is part of the law of the township.
Which is based on the higher revised code.
The higher revised code, it's how it's all set, right. The Board of Zoning Appeals is basically, basically established because when, when a zoning district drops down, it's a big blanket, falls over a large area. What happens when that large blanket falls down is that it may not fit each and every individual parcel of ground within the township or within that district. An example would be a question regarding a side setback. The zoning appeals board would look at that, and they would make a determination as to whether or not the zoning ordinance, as it affects that particular property, had an adverse effect on it when it came into being. In other words, okay, we said, we've got to have ten feet for sideline setback, as an example. Well, as I go to build my house, I find that because of the severe terrain of the property, I may have to slide the house a little closer to the property. You know, it wasn't a hardship created by me, just the way I'm up. You know, now, could they say, well, forget that, you have to cut out this and build a high retaining wall and take out all these trees, or we could let you slide the building over a little bit, as an example. With McDonald's, then they, some conditional uses, here's a permitted use, as an example, a permitted use in a B-one district is a restaurant. Conditional use would be a request to have a drive-through.
Well, this is having two, on same parcel.
And we're having now two parcels here. Commercial districts, you know, many different commercial districts will have multiple buildings on one parcel, whereas in residential district, the principal use is the house. Okay, so the difference is, the, the BZA is there to try to see that the actual district meets the property and that type of thing, versus an actual zone change, which was what the request was, uh, back August, or February. Okay, so there are two, two different components. And I think the key thing is that the, the BZA is a particular site to basically kind of correct any inaccuracies that happened when, once again, this old rope blanket dropped onto an area. And to see the properties are, are being allowed, the zoning allows the property to be properly utilized. And one example of the recent request for Edgewood, the R-three permits single-story, multiple-family units, up to four units per building. There was, I think there was some talk about having larger buildings. That would have had to go through the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Well, it's because it's a higher density.
Well, no, it's because of the building size, not density.
Well, the R-three of the laws for three and four in a building, and they're requesting twenty in a building, that affects the density?
No.
It does not?
No, because you're only allowed to have a certain amount of density per acre. They can, it's, it's, okay, so, so the example, but they could have, they could have seven four-unit structures, as an example, or one twenty-eight unit building, same density, on the property's twenty-eight units. But the, you know, the size of, the bigger the buildings, the more units they have per building, the fewer buildings there are going to be allowed to have, and it would be the example.
And what is the highest density or multi-family?
R-four.
R-four. And that would allow those buildings?
And R-four...
Without going to the Board of Appeals?
Oh, I believe that R-four would again, I'd have to double check on this, the actual...
R-four would allow that to go...
I think so.
Would allow those buildings without going to the Board of Appeals?
Right. The R-three would not. But again, that's, that's, that would be a conditional use, and they could say, once again, we're permitted to have X units, but we want to have areas that suffer park, therefore we want to have a larger building. But the actual maximum density, no, it would not change per, per the little offsite, it's just an actual number of buildings on site.
But in any case, it still would have to, any change in the zoning...
Oh, the zoning would have to go through the zoning commission, as we...
Zoning commission.
Yes, that's correct.
And if you wanted to put those large buildings on there, you would then have to go through the Board of Appeals.
go through the board of appeals to approve that or R3.
Right.
All right, well, the only other thing I, and I do want to thank Scott for coming. I mean, you were a little incredulous about how the scenario turned out and I appreciate you digging that up. If you hadn't actually provided us with the information for the higher revised code, which believe me is going through that, it's like trying to go through a piece of wood with a dull saw blade. The other thing I wanted to ask is that if the zoning department would extend us courtesy, I, I don't know if this is kosher or not, but we'd like to know if there are, if there is a request for a change involving this particular thing, and it's fairly emotional for a lot of people. And I mean, I can call over there all I want, but I, I might get out of town for a week or somebody else might be, and I don't know if that's something you'd be willing to do, but if you, we can arrange for you to let somebody in our group know if something hits the desk, we, we'd really appreciate that because we are, we are fairly still active and, you know, we would have liked to see the, the property remain at golf course, everybody would, I think. I think 200 people would, four didn't, but that's, if that's not the case, then we thought it would be a nice acquisition for the township. There were a lot of synergies there, we were trying to marry up with different groups and, and like I said, that may still come to pass. The other people may decide they're really not interested, if they can't get the zoning change, that's entirely up to them, but we, we will stay on top of this because it's, you know, this is, we're vested in this neighborhood. All, all the people in my neighborhood, Wellington Hills, I'm, that's where I am, Wellington Woods, Steiner, Washington Square, Stonehenge, and even Lexington Farms, they're all single families. And I don't think anybody really wants to see an intercity style of arrangement of multiple family houses. Thank you. Oh, I'd like to thank Lou too, because Lou also took the time to meet with us and that was extremely helpful.
Anybody else?
It's okay, Mr. Arden. Go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Dan Arden, 1311 Stone Crossing in Stonehenge. I would like to first thank anyone and everyone here who might have served in the military. Thank you for your commitment, your duty, sacrifice. Also, we thank everyone who wears a uniform on behalf of our safety, well-being. I represent, I'm one of 15, 17 members on the committee to save Edgewood. I have to tell you at the onset, I am very disappointed that the director of the parks indicated that he does not see feasibility in a collaboration between the township and other entities to save and preserve Edgewood golf courses. I regret that because we've lost seven weeks without getting together with Mr. Steinberg at all. But I think at one point or another, the committee pretty much expected this result, at least I did, and several. That's not to say that this is the end. We are still passionate, committed, vocal, impacted by the threat to the integrity of our immediate quadrant, our community, like Mr. Mull said, the five hamlets around the golf courses. When we had the zoning hearing in July, I think the paper indicated that we had in excess of 200 people in attendance. Our goal for the next hearing, should there be one, hopefully will be double or triple Gentlemen, I assure you, we are not done. We don't know what the plans are for the developer and contractor. We may be out of the township loop, which I also regret, and like Mr. Mull said, I hope you will take it under consideration to keep us advised. There's a biblical saying that to those who are given much, much is expected. I have 1,270 signatures here and I assure you, I can get, and we can get thousands more. We represent, I believe, the majority of our community, not just Edgewood, not just Wellington, Stonehenge, or Washington Square. We worked very hard to get these. These are not just golfers, these are people of all ages from our community. They're depending on us to speak for them and that unofficial poll that was taken a few weeks ago, I remind everyone was 53% to 47. Now, of course, there were under 500 people that chose to reply. However, if you interpolate and what have you, I, I think you know what I'm getting at. We represent them and you represent us. The elected officials and appointed officials are our only voices. We want to preserve and maintain the integrity of our community. It cannot be done so with some of the zoning hearsay at this point. We don't know what's going to happen. We're diligently working to prepare for whatever is happening. This has been going on since basically January, when the contract was initially written, almost a year. Our committee has been together since June. We've hurdled a couple of obstacles, we realized there are more, but I assure you of this, and you please pass it on to those who are concerned that the committee is well and good, doing just fine. We're doing our homework, we are looking at other options, and it's not over yet. And hopefully, you gentlemen and other people in the township confidence will see what these thousands of people are trying to get across. Here we are, thousands of people who have voted, pay taxes, are vested in this community, bought homes, et cetera, and we're threatened. And we have a couple of individuals or a corporation or an entity, they do not live here, they do not vote here, they do not pay taxes towards the school or the infrastructure, and yet everything is being tossed topsy-turvy. For what? For profit? And that was our entire motto, save Edgewood for future generations, not for profit. I don't know. I'd rather go head-to-head with two or three people than maybe 5,000 or 10,000. And like you said, Mr. Leno, 20 minutes ago, you had a responsibility to that woman or the neighbors in that situation, and you do. And you have a responsibility, and so does Mr. Geopasis and Mr. Hawes and Mr. Steinberg and Mr. Flex, I'm sorry, we all do. We all have an obligation to be the best citizens that we possibly can, to help our neighbors, help our community, help the township, help the city, help the state, help the federal government, that's what we're here for. And that is what we're expected to do. And that is exactly why we started this committee. We do thank you, and pardon me for taking so much time, but I did want to impress upon everyone that we are still healthy and regardless of whatever setbacks we are confronted with, we'll pray a lot, meet frequently, continue to move forward, to protect what is very, very dear to us. And when there is a threat, we have to address it head-on and basically, pardon me, I'm getting dry, I'm getting over a sinus infection. Basically, we have to be prepared for a scrimmage, if you will. I don't want to say a battle, but it has been a battle. We don't want another battle, but if it is a scrimmage, I think we'll be up to the task like we were before, and I hope we will be again. And again, I will leave you with, thank you very much for your kind consideration, all of you, and we depend upon our representatives and that's why you gentlemen are here and that's why we are back here. So, thank you very much.
Have you guys heard anything?
Yes. My name is Brad Higgy, I live at 7191 Sugarwood Road in Wellington Woods, Alamo. I am a golfer and I'm a veteran, just to let you know about that. I just wanted to find out, I came, I spoke to this committee meeting last time, and I wondered what progress had been made regarding the two items that I brought to your attention and what I should do from here. I mean, do I come to these meetings until it's resolved or what do I do? So, that's the question I'm asking of you. If you're diving into your PCs and trying to figure out what I mentioned the last time?
Yeah, I've got it up here. The first one was, it raised the issue of the lot, the lot, the lot going as far as...
That's not been addressed yet. Something will address, Mr. Williams and I have a list of things to address over the upcoming, where here, so that anything, any changes will be in effect come next grass season.
So, the amendments to...
So, what can, I mean, I guess what we need to give Mr. Higgy here is, what can he expect an answer from our board, some type, some type of update? No, I don't, I don't mean this to come across as, I don't want him to have to come here every, every meeting, when it could be spent at home with grandkids.
Probably give the, our birthday or...
Yeah, you're more than welcome always to be here, but I mean, for the sake of just trying to track down your answers.
I'd say as soon as we can act and make a change in anything, it's probably going to be the second, third month of the next year, so I'm glad we have something in place by the...
Okay, so March?
March, so we have a place by the grass growing.
All right, that's fine, okay. And I wondered about, Mr. I have seen him, if you're a doctor?
I did, and he told me he was coming over to talk to you.
He has not?
I did talk to him, so he said he was going to get with you.
Okay, what's, what's the result?
I will talk to him, he will be here tomorrow, you think?
I think so.
Yeah, I will be over here tomorrow. I did talk to him on the next day.
All right, well, I just, now I'm taking care of his yard and stuff like that, so that's all that I had to bring up is to figure out what I need to do from here.
You can expect the update on the first of March?
First of March?
If there's going to be a change, that is the first stage was, do we need to make a change, if I remember correctly?
Yeah.
And then the second?
Well, you know, it's gave a lot of service to, you know, the effort and everything else to change it, but I know what it's like trying to change or amend a resolution or whatever. Like he's down by the hill.
Yeah, so Danny and I will know in the next, before the next meeting, after we sit down, whether we think we need to change it. We can certainly get in touch. Does Danny have your contact information?
Oh, yes, yeah.
Well, but then if we're going to ask you guys if you want to make a change about it, we'll have, it'll be the longer time on certain...
So, bottom line, or are we...
Spring.
Spring.
Plantation, that's first growing.
Yeah, March, or thereabouts.
Yes.
Okay, and your meeting for December is when?
The 10th and the 17th.
Okay, 10th and the 17th.
It's going to be regular meetings at 6:00 PM.
Yeah, so I need to come to those or be present at those?
Well, if, if they have some type of guidance that is provided, we'll have Mr. Fall follow-up directly with you.
Okay, that's fine. That's all I wanted to speak about.
Thank you for your time. Thanks for coming out.
All right, very good, thanks.
Anybody else for, for the board? Yeah, that's great. Okay, that will close all the speaks, we'll go to Concerns of Trustees, and there's two on the, I think, Mr. Hawes.
The first one I had was a thing to receive from the regional chamber, an initiative that the legislature has regarding a capital bill for 2014. It's specifically in regards to project, different projects, infrastructure projects and so forth. I had Ken Uenbruch, County Township Association, secretary assistant, assistant secretary, send out a link. Did you guys get any, because there was a question, you got it?
When was it?
I did get it.
I think she may have just sent it out to the act, to the active members, and it would have been a tail on the last...
Last Thursday or Friday?
Yeah. And there's a deadline of the 15th. Joe, I can take a look, I know it. I think she may have just sent it out to the active members, because anybody who's not a trustee or a fiscal officer is considered an associate member, so that, that may be it, but what I'd like is, I'll get that, I'll get that link to you guys, it sounds like it did identify, provide any constructive feedback on potential capital projects that could, you know, pull resources to play in township to start counting, whether it's through collaborative efforts. Chief Schellberger, I don't know if these public questions are the criteria, a joint training facility with the other departments, given what we've got down here in the shape that it's in, to Joe, whether it's areas where we've got major stormwater infrastructure that needs upgraded, I'm not sure what from a park, parcel, whatever, but I'll make sure I have that link to you guys tomorrow. And then, outside of that, the second one was in our December 10th meeting, our session is actually going to be the joint meeting between the plain local board of education as well as our board, and that's going to be held here, starting at 5:20. So no different than in the past, where we talk about other areas, keep working together, new areas and so forth. So for the process purposes, we're aware of that.
Okay, let's go to approval in the minutes of October 22nd, 2013, and I will snowball their approval. Second, in discussion, hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Geopasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Okay, and for the record, Mrs. Campbell is absent tonight because of an injury, so let the record reflect.
So, she views this later, I do say hi to her.
And there's a need for an executive session, so to be here by resolve by the county township board trustee, Star County, Ohio, to adjourn to executive session at 7:32 PM from this regular meeting of November 12, 2013, as authorized by the Higher Revolutionary Code 1222G to the purpose of consideration of, and I will defer to the law, right?
To consider the appointment, employment, which is compensation of public employees for officials.
One second, discussion, all of us, please.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?